Good evening, welcome to the June 8th work session of the Gaston County Board of Commissioners. My name is Tom Keger, I serve as Chairman of the Board as well as Commissioner for Gastonia Township. At this time, I'd like to welcome our viewers and thank Spectrum Cable and AT&amp;T for making this possible for our citizens at home. For our television audience and live stream audience, I would like to present your Gaston County Board of Commissioners, beginning on my far right.
Good evening Chad Brown, Riverbend Township.
Good evening Bob Hovis, Crowder's Mountain Township.
Good evening Tracy Philbeck, Dallas Township.
Good evening, I'm Ronnie Worley, South Point Township.
At this time, I'd like to also mention that Commissioner Kim Johnson is joining us via Zoom this evening. Good evening Commissioner Johnson.
Good evening everyone.
There we are, we'll have, we'll have just a tiny delay when she wants to speak or cast her vote. At this time, if we'd all rise for the invocation by Commissioner Philbeck and then the Pledge of Allegiance led by Commissioner Ronnie Worley.
Heavenly Father, we thank you for this day, we thank you for the many blessings that you have given us, we just ask that you would give us wisdom, understanding, as we go about the people's business, in Christ's name I pray, amen.
Would you join me in the Pledge of Allegiance? Say it loud and proud. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America.
And to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
At this time, I would call on Commissioner Chad Brown to announce the certificates of appreciation for past public service.
Thank you Mr. Chairman. Certificates, it is a great pleasure for the Gaston County Commissioners to honor citizens who has unselfishly given of their time, talent, skills, energy and service to being appointed as one of our boards by the Commission. This type of service is the foundation of citizenship involvement in our county government and helpful to shape our future of our community. We gratefully acknowledge the work of the following individuals and their appreciation has been forwarded to them. Mandy Grammer, Counsel on Agent. Steve Diavria, Environmental Review and Advisory Board. Jeff Lowry, the Personnel Advisory Board. Philip Heathcock, the Workforce Development Board. Thank you Mr. Chairman.
Thank you, next item is citizen recognition and at this time, we only have one signed up, Mr. Baldwin, come on up, if you would, please give us your name and address for the record.
My name is Will Baldwin, and I address 426 Outer Holt Road. I would like to thank you Chairman Keger and Commissioners for taking the time out of your busy schedules to serve the county on the Board of Commissioners. As I've said, you know, my name is Will Baldwin, I'm a recent graduate actually from NC State University and I earned a Bachelor's Science Degree in Horticulture Science and I'll be continuing graduate school at NC State to study forestry starting in the fall. And I'm here to express concern about the proposed lithium mine in Northwest Gaston County, near my grandparents Hugh and Livy Carpenter. It is especially important to me because I have hopes to continue to live and start an agribusiness in this beautiful area. And I just wanted to share some thoughts about lithium and Piedmont Lithium's open pit mine that they've discussed. Most, you know, most lithium in the world is found in saltwater aquifers and is extracted by pumping the water to the surface and evaporating the water. This form of extraction does less damage to the environment and is cheaper than open pit mining. In the US, these resources are found in Arkansas, California and Nevada. These are also more abundant sources of lithium than what would be, what is in Gaston County. In addition, especially where Piedmont Lithium has planned or proposes to build a mine. In addition, Argentina and Chile have some of the largest deposits of lithium in the world. Forbes Magazine discusses how both those countries, because of their significant deposits and the low cost of brine extraction, will dominate the lithium market in ensuring lower prices making extraction, making extraction from ore more unprofitable. Open pit mines also pose a number of social and economic, environmental threats. For example, contamination from tailings from the mine would end up in our pristine waterways and would harm the water supplies of towns like Belmont and Dallas, making this an issue for all of Gaston County. They also create significant amounts of toxic dust filled with arsenic, lead, zinc, copper and other toxic metals. This is especially a concern because Piedmont Lithium has discussed an aggressive blasting program blasting three times a day. The toxic dust would contaminate soil and water as well as harm the health of workers in the mine and those who live nearby. In sum, lithium is abundant throughout the world and can be extracted more efficiently from other resources throughout the world and in the United States. Between that and the negative impacts of open pit mines, I know that you all will see that this is not going to provide a hopeful future for Gaston County and I hope that when this comes up as a voting rezone that you all would vote no. Thank you for your time.
Thank you sir. It's gonna be one of the shortest work sessions we've ever experienced, is there any other matters that needs to come before the Board at this time?
Just let everybody on the Board know that Commissioner School has started this week and Session 1 was this morning, myself, yourself, Chairman and Commissioner Worley, I know some other Commissioners were doing other work elsewhere, but just want to let you know this is going on and next week will be Week 2 for the ones who were missed out last year. So, the Board is getting what they put out there. Thank you Mr. Chairman.
All right, thank you. That concludes the work session. And I'll now call a order the June 8th, 2021 Special Meeting of the Gaston County Board of Commissioners. Again, my name is Tom Keger, I serve as Chairman of the Board. Tonight, we will hold a public hearing on the proposed fiscal year 2021-22 county budget. Following the hearing, the Board will consider adoption of the budget. We also have other items of business that we will take up immediately following the budget segment. Before we go into public hearing, let me outline the rules of procedure for tonight's public hearing. Citizens wishing to make comment will be recognized by the Chair, then required to step to the microphone to give their comments. Citizens will state their name and address for the record, comments will be limited to three minutes, questions shall be directed to the Chair for response and the Chair shall rule on all points of order during the hearing. Do I hear a motion to go into public hearing, please? Motion by Mr. Brown, second by Commissioner Hovis. Commissioner Johnson, do you agree to vote to go into session?
Yes.
Okay, and all those in favor? All right, thank you. I will be asking Commissioner Johnson for her response before we go to the regular Board, I've been instructed by our Clerk. Okay, first I'll ask the County Manager for her comments prior to taking any citizen comments.
Thank you Mr. Chairman and members of the Board. I have placed an updated budget ordinance at your seat. You'll find it inside of the infographic on the budget and that's a summary for, for your information. So, just a couple of points about the updated ordinance, there's a minor modification that we've included, it is approximately $150,000 less than what I presented on May the 25th. In addition to that, the updated ordinance does include the requested tax rate increases for the volunteer fire departments capped at a two cent maximum, so that modification is in your ordinance. The total recommended budget, as you may recall, is approximately $342 million. The general fund portion of that is approximately $229 million. The tax rate remains flat at .83 cent per $100 of assessed value, which again is the lowest in 20 years. The budget does not include fund balance to balance the budget and as we've discussed previously, this has not been the case in 50 years or since 1970. And I wanted to point out again that the budget does maintain a very conservative fiscal approach and achieves two broad budget goals that you have given to me as your manager. The first is that this budget does fund programs and initiatives that align with your priorities and it also funds the county's core critical services and programs. Thank you Mr. Chairman.
Thank you. At this time, are there any citizens wishing to make comment? Questions from the Board? This concludes the advertised public hearing, in accordance with Chapter 166A of the North Carolina General Statute, citizens may provide written comment to the Clerk of the Board. For more information, her number is 704-866-3196. Do I have a motion to close the public hearing? Mr. Brown makes the motion, Mr. Worley makes the second, any discussion? Commissioner Johnson, what say thou?
Yes.
Okay, all those in favor? It is unanimous Madam Clerk, thank you. Do I hear a motion to adopt the fiscal year 22 budget presented by the Manager?
I'd make that motion Mr. Chairman.
Mr. Worley makes the motion, Mr. Brown makes the second, any discussion? Commissioner Johnson, what say they, or say thou?
Yes.
Yes. All those in favor? The budget's adopted unanimously. Oh, I'm sorry, excuse me. Okay, six to one. Next, Item B, to approve the amended order to levy and collect ad valorem tax for the Gaston County Fire Service District. Motion and a second. Mr. Brown makes the motion.
I'll say.
Mr. Fraley makes the second, any discussion? Commissioner Johnson?
Yes.
Okay, all those in favor?
Does this motion, hold on, is there any discussion?
Okay.
Does this motion include all the fire departments?
This is just for the tax collection.
Okay, got you.
Got it.
Collection. Got you, okay, yeah, okay.
All those in favor? It is unanimous, thank you. Item C, to amend order to levy and collect ad valorem tax for Long Shoals Fire Protection District, is there a motion? Mr. Brown makes the motion, is there a second? Commissioner Worley makes the second, discussion? Commissioner Johnson?
Yes.
All those in favor? It is unanimous. Item D, approve the amend order, amended order to levy and collect ad valorem tax for South Gastonia Fire Protection District, is there a motion? Mr. Brown makes the motion, is there a second? Commissioner Worley, discussion? Commissioner Johnson?
Yes.
Yes sir, Mr. Brown.
Is this not the?
This is South Gastonia Fire Protection District, to collect the ad valorem tax. Agenda Item D.
This is the one we amended?
Yeah, they, the first two, we also amended.
What you put in, and yours?
That's correct, to the two cent maximum.
Okay, Commissioner Johnson, once again, please?
Yes.
Any more discussion? All those in favor? It's unanimous, thank you. Somebody have a question? We're going to take a quick break per Clerk's order, so we'll be right back. I thought you were gonna bring something up. Our Attorney, Mr. Sink, to basically break down what we did and what we're gonna do.
Yes sir Mr. Chairman, I think the discussion has been that you would entertain a motion to reconsider Item A and once dispensed with that motion for reconsideration, we'll move on to a different motion, which I'm happy to discuss at the appropriate time, so a motion to reconsider.
I'll make the motion to reconsider Item A.
I'll second that.
And that was to consider adoption of the fiscal 2021-2022 county budget. Correct. Okay, we have a motion by Mr. Brown and second by Commissioner Philbeck, any discussion? All those in favor?
Well, oh yeah, go ahead.
Okay, Commissioner Johnson?
Yes.
Okay, it's unanimous, thank you. Now, Mr. Sink.
Mr. Chairman, I'd like to make a motion on Item A that was just reconsidered, please, the motion being to adopt the FY '22 Budget Ordinance as presented according to the provisions set forth in Chapter 158 and 166A of the North Carolina General Statutes, with requested VFD tax rate increases capped at a maximum of two cents increase. This would be exceptions for the Crowder's Mountain, which is, has two separate issues with, they already have EMS and fire put in there together and they would remain flat in this budget.
I'll second that.
All right. Donna, do you have that all back? All right, is there any discussion? Motion by Mr. Brown, second by Commissioner Philbeck, any further discussion? Commissioner Johnson?
Yes.
Thank you, all those in favor? It's unanimous, thank you everyone. Okay, help me out Donna, have we, do we go to other business now after Item D?
Another motion for reconsideration, Mr. Chairman.
Okay, Item B, Mr. Brown?
I'd like to make a motion to reconsider Item B as well, sir.
I'll second that.
Okay, Ms. Buff, any questions? Any discussion? Commissioner Johnson?
Yes.
Okay, all those in favor? It is unanimous, thank you. Now we go to other business. We finished D, correct? Okay, Item 1 of other business, it's a public hearing to establish the Gaston County Economic Development Aircraft Financial Incentive Program. The procedural rules for the public hearing were outlined earlier in the meeting, do I have a motion to go into this public hearing? Mr. Hovis makes the motion, Commissioner Worley makes the sec, makes the second. Commissioner Johnson?
Yes.
Okay, all those in favor? All right, we're now in public hearing. I'm gonna ask the County Attorney for any comments that he'd like to make prior to taking citizen comment. Mr. Sink, the floor is yours.
Thank you Mr. Chairman, Commissioners, the proposed incentive program is one that would incentivize aircraft investment as well as aircraft hangar investment within the county. When you get right down to it, what it consists of is any company, any business who wants to invest a minimum of $10 million in an aircraft domiciled here, permanently located here in other words, or an aircraft hangar, which is obviously, you know, it is where it is, so here, of at least $10 million, that y'all if adopted would incentivize, would incentivize such investment whereby over the next three years, post-application to Donny Hicks and EDC, upon successful application to the financial incentive program, would receive back in the form of a dollar figure, 45% of that initial investment, when you take a .1% of the total, let's say it's a $10 million aircraft, you take .1% of that, so you got $100,000. In year one, the company, the company investing said sum would receive back 45% of that lump sum, $100,000, so $45,000 in year one, in year two, it would be 30%, so $30,000, and year three, it would be the final year of that financial incentive, which is 25, so there you go, 45, 30 and 25 equals 100% of that lump sum in the form of a financial incentive. And it's important to note that, you know, when staff was, was putting this together at the, at the direction of a few county Commissioners, it's, it's more than just dealing with an increase in the tax base, it's about growing jobs, growing businesses, growing increased opportunities for execs to fly into Gaston and do business here and that's really important, I'll just say, in the macro, when it comes down to case law, it's, it's important that you all do this, if, if adopted, for more than just increasing the tax base.
And just for information for the public, the state allows greater incentives in different areas of economic development and this, this pales compared to some of the incentives, but it's a, it's a tool to help us bring big business into the county, maybe even folks that have businesses in Mecklenburg or Lincoln or Cleveland or whatever, to bring their planes here and I believe the city has plans to expand their runways across Union Road, actually I believe they're gonna tunnel under it for the road and the runway will run across where Union Road is now, so it's something that could give us a great opportunity with, with regards to economic development, potentially. Any other comments?
I'll make, are we still in public hearing? I'll make a motion to close public hearing.
Second.
Any discussion? Commissioner Johnson?
Yes.
Okay, all those in favor of closing the public hearing, it is unanimous.
And Mr. Chairman, I'll make a motion to establish the Gaston County Economic Development Aircraft Financial Incentive Program, according to the provisions set forth in General, North Carolina General Statute 158-7, 1 dot 1 and Chapter 166A.
All right, motion by Mr. Philbeck, second by Mr. Brown, any discussion? Commissioner Johnson?
Yes.
Thank you, all those in favor? It too is unanimous, thank you everyone. Item 2, County Attorney to approve the memorandum of agreement between the State of North Carolina and local governments proceeds, proceeds relating to the settlement of the opioid litigation.
Yes sir Mr. Chairman, members of the Board, thanks for the time on this as well, so what you would be voting on tonight is a resolution that would say, okay, we as a county commission are going to sign on to the MOU as it relates to the multi-district litigation, national opioid litigation, with regard to the opioid, prospective opioid settlement, we are not at the finish line yet with regard to an actual settlement, but we're close and in baseball terms, we're about the, the middle of the eighth inning, as you'd call it and, but we are getting closer and so what this would do is of the 76 counties that are litigating this thing in North Carolina and eight municipalities, it is important legally to have that solidarity when you go into, okay, this is how the proceeds, if and when that settlement comes to fruition, are going to be spent. And I would just add very quickly that the MOA itself, the 38-page document that's included in your materials tonight, gives y'all a lot of flexibility, as long as those monies are tied to opioid-related purposes, to purposes of actually remedying a lot of the ravaging effects of the crisis, which as all of us know at this dius is not new, but there's an option A and option B, there's a lot of different ways and 16 examples within each option that you all can, and staff can execute in terms of remediating a lot of the damage that's already been done here in our community. So that's, that's what this MOA is about, again, the settlement's not finalized, but it would say, okay, we're signing on to something that says, we're with you North Carolina, we are with the rest of you in terms of how these opioid dollars, very much high transparency, significant audits are entailed within the MOA, things like that, so that you know exactly where the dollars are going to and all of those dollars, no matter what the final number comes to, what the settlement, we know that Gaston will get about 3.1% when you plug in the numbers to the algorithm, so, you know, you're hearing things in the news like 20, 26 billion dollars nationally, so you, you hone into that here locally and you're looking at about 800 to 850 million dollars, hopefully if all goes well, and that MOU is just a streamlining of how those monies would be spent here.
Thank you. Just, just a little side note that we will eventually see something from this, but it's gonna take a long time to receive it. Did you tell us once, 20 years maybe?
It's 18 years, but it is front-loaded is the good news, the first three to five years are heavily front-loaded, so you do get a good chunk of that upfront, but it is an 18-year period, so the value of the dollar is, is real as well, but I will say, Chuck Moore, myself, Courtney Rogers, we've really looked at this thing and when you crunch the numbers, even with the considerations of the value of the dollar, you maximize your chances of getting the most money for our community by engaging in the MOA.
So you're saying it's a doubleheader rather than middle of the eighth inning?
That's fair, okay, that's fair.
Mr. Chairman, I'll make a motion, we move forward, sign on the MOA.
I'll second.
Commissioner Fraley makes a motion, Commissioner Hovis made the second, discussion? Commissioner Johnson?
Yes.
All those in favor? It is unanimous, thank you. Item 3, Commissioner Hovis and Worley, County Manager, Resolution and Recognition of June 19th as Juneteenth in Gaston County. I'll entertain a motion. Commissioner Hovis makes the motion, Commissioner Worley makes the second, discussion? Commissioner Johnson? Commissioner Johnson?
Yes.
All those in favor? It is unanimous. Thank you.
Chairman, I wanted to thank Pearl Burris Floyd for putting, working on this with the group in our community. Thank you for your work, young lady.
I see two young ladies and one young man. This concludes our special meeting. Our next regular meeting is Tuesday, June 22nd, 6:00 p.m., here in the Harley B Gaston Jr. Public Forum Courthouse. Thank you for watching. If you have any questions or comments, please contact our clerk, Donna Buff, again, at I will now entertain a motion to adjourn. Mr. Brown makes the motion. Commissioner Philbeck makes the second. Commissioner Johnson?
Yes.
All those in favor? It is unanimous. Good evening, everyone.